Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Bowling Green City Council. We're glad that you're all here this evening. As always, particularly happy to see Superintendent Scrooge with us this evening. Thank you, sir. Kay, would you please begin by calling the roll?
Osbacher.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
Holland Ba.
Here.
Jeffers.
Here.
Robinette.
Here.
Roland.
Yes.
Zampardino.
Excuse me.
It all works. Zampardino.
I'm sorry, I thought I heard.
That's okay.
The minutes for the meeting that was held on February 19th, 2019, were presented to council prior to this meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Mr. President, I do want to make one comment. If I recall, after Mayor Edwards came up to issue order, non-reporter, there were comments made by members of council that don't appear in them. And maybe they're not necessary for the minutes because they weren't.
They weren't.
They were in response to the mayor's acknowledgement of his State of the City address. A number of members made some comments about.
I can go back and listen to the video and make some additions if you.
But I just noticed that those comments are not included.
Okay. Usually things that aren't pertinent to decisions made regarding council, they don't need to be in there, but I'd be glad to go back.
That's one reason I bring it up to the.
Yeah, I would think, I would fall back to the same observation that Kay made.
Okay. That's fine.
But that's a good observation, Kay. Maybe you can just kind of keep that in mind a little bit when you're listening to the minutes. I think typically you do a really good job of capturing everything that certainly is relevant as it relates to discussions for council action.
Oh, there's no doubt they weren't involving a decision.
Yeah.
Okay.
Very good.
I would request that some of my comments along that line would not be included.
Be stricken. So noted.
Greg, thanks for that observation. Now I would ask if there's a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, the minutes are presented as, or approved as presented. Kay, do we have correspondence this evening?
Yes, I have a few things. From the Finance Director, Brian Bouchong, is a listing of budget transfers to be made for the month of March. Copies of those were distributed to you prior to the meeting for your approval.
Is there a motion to approve the budget transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, the budget transfers are approved as presented.
Also distributed to you prior to the meeting was the Financial Budget Summary Report for the month of January 2019. And distributed to you via email on Friday were the Parks and Recreation Fees Updates, and that needs your approval as well.
Assuming that all my council have reviewed the park fee structure as presented to each of us prior to this meeting, I would ask if there is a motion to approve the fee structure.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I want to say that on behalf of the Park, Parks and Rec Board, that they put a lot of consideration into that decision. They started last September in discussing higher prices for pool passes. They were interested only in very small segments of raising the price, not one big, one large amount. And then the discussion started about whether or not we should raise the price for Bowling Green children. The emphasis on the discussion was children. We felt that we should include as many children in partaking in our city pool and learning how to swim as we possibly could. So after months and months of consideration, it was decided that the fees would not go up for Bowling Green residents, and instead they're raised for out-of-town residents only.
Thank you for those comments, Sandy. I also followed that discussion and appreciated very much the sentiment that was being expressed by the school board member, or I'm sorry, by the park members. I think that all of us strive, whenever possible, to keep the price of our park programming as affordable and accessible to all of our residents as we can, and I think that they truly did their due diligence in that conversation, and I'm thankful for their efforts. So, thank you.
Mr. President, I would echo what both of you said. In following the meetings, it was clear that, that not only the board, but our director were interested in keeping the daily pool pass low for residents. And the motivation that I saw from that was that parks are a very important part of the community, and one of the important aspects of a park is that it is affordable to people from any income class, and it would be unfortunate if people were excluded. And so Jeff Crawford, the chair, was, made his thoughts known along those lines and was very consistent, and I'm very pleased that they managed to work out the numbers so that it would not be an increase for the daily pass for Bowling Green residents out of sensitivity for all income classes.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second on the table to approve the park fees. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, the fees are approved as presented.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Kay. We do not have any special recognition this evening, so Kay would ask if anyone has signed up for lobby visitation.
Yes, we have one person, Mary Hinkleman.
Mary.
Good evening, everyone, Mayor. I just wanted to remind everybody that State of the County Address is next Wednesday, March 13th. The doors will open at 7:30 PM, oh, sorry, AM. And the program will start at 8 o'clock in the morning. We will have some light refreshments there. We will be addressed by our commissioners, Wood County Commissioners, sorry, I'm a little bit off tonight, and you can tell, I'm sitting over there having a hot flash and I'm just totally off. Stricken from the record, please.
Not relevant.
This is so bad.
It's okay with you, Greg, we'll strike that.
Our Wood County Commissioners, Dr. Doris Herringshaw, Dr. Ted Bullis, and Craig LaHaut will all address us, as well as their guest, Judge Alan Mayberry, Matt Astry, our Wood County Auditor, and Cindy Hoffner, our Wood County Clerk of Courts. So I want to make sure everyone knew, and if you would like to RSVP to the chamber so we have a nice count, and we'll see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
That's all we have, yes.
Very good, thank you. Proceeding to the introduction of new legislation, please.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
From the Finance Committee, I have an ordinance amending and adopting Section 35.70 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding city fees and fees charged for services. Ordinance authorizing the Municipal Administrator and the Utilities Director to seek qualifications and/or advertise for bids and enter into contract or contracts for design, engineering, right-of-way acquisition, construction, and other services relating to the East Worcester Street-Campbell Hill Road Roundabout Project.
Thank you, Bruce.
Mr. President.
Mr. Harold.
For the Public Lands Buildings Committee of Council, I have an ordinance amending and adopting Section 113.04B, D, and E of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding mobile food vendors.
Thank you, Bill.
Mr. President.
Mr. Zampardino.
From the Transportation and Safety Committee, we have a resolution authorizing the Mayor of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio to file a, to file a capital and operating plan for the years 2019 through 2022 with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the U.S. Department of Transportation, as authorized under federal transit laws as codified, 49 U.S.C., Section 5311, financial assistance for other than urbanized areas.
Thank you, John. Official reports, Mr. Mayor.
President, members of council, and all assembled, I do not have a report for you this evening, but I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you might have.
Other questions for Mayor Edwards. Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Municipal Administrator, Ms. Tretter.
Good evening, a few updates for you this evening. The timed parking fees have increased per council action that went into effect today, and also raised the time limits in the parking lots to three hours. So those have been implemented. The kiosks in City Lot 2 that are slated for replacement, those parts have been ordered, however, they are still not in, so parking continues to be free in City Parking Lot Number 2. We anticipate that will be in about the next month. In anticipation of those kiosks, though, we are working on some public information campaigns that folks can learn about those new, much easier-to-use kiosks. And if anybody's really excited about them, we already have the app available that folks can get signed up for. It's called Park Smarter, and again, we'll be having a lot more information about that, but it really is a very easy-to-use app that you'll be able to enter in all of your information, the information about your car, so when you do pull into a city parking lot, if you choose to use the app, you don't even have to visit the kiosk at all. It can all be done from, from your phone. But again, more information to come, but we wanted to let you know that those changes had been implemented as of today. Also, an update for you on the East Worcester Street Corridor Plan. We had mentioned when the consultant was here in December and presented to all of you that it would be mid-February, that you would get the white paper about that. The consultant did submit the white paper on time, however, after review, we had a few items between us and BG SU that we wanted to be presented a bit differently, that we thought could be improved a bit. So we're continuing to work with the consultant to get you the product that we think would be most actionable for the city moving forward. And the last item is to request an executive session at the end to discuss property acquisition. And that's all I have this evening.
Other questions for Ms. Tretter?
Thanks.
Thank you. Park, I'm sorry, Planning Director, Ms. Saylor.
Planning Director and the Parks and Recreation Director are not here this evening, so I can try to field any questions you may have for them.
Any questions? Not, we can always catch up with them in the office, thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Marsh.
Court.
Questions for Mr. Marsh? Thank you. Utilities Director, Mr. O'Connell.
So, last week, most of the public power communities went to DC for the APPA legislative rally. I typically go to that, I was not able to go this year due to a family conflict with our schedule, but the information that was transmitted or translated to most of the elected officials focused on three or four areas thereof concern for us at the federal level. And as we've touted the message for many years, is the federal sequester on the Build America Bonds and the impact that has on several projects that we have constructed with those bonds, Prairie State and the hydro projects that were built with that funding source. The second item would be our increasing transmission costs and how they continue to escalate every year with what seems to be a little oversight from regulatory agencies. The third one was, the third one was a new item, and the FCC recently put out a new, new rule or a regulation governing pole attachments, mainly focused around small cell wireless carriers and their ability to attach to our utility poles and where those can go. And so trying to push back a little bit on that and keep some of our typical home rule or local control over our own utility poles. And then the fourth one is, again, we've touted for many years, related to the protection of municipal bonds and their tax-exempt status, and the importance that that has for not just public power, but really any governmental agency that wants to issue bonds to do projects and the ability to provide those or get those bonds at a cheaper rate, a lower interest rate, to keep those at our ability. So again, I wasn't able to attend, but the group that did go from northwest Ohio was able to meet with Representative Latta, and that would include like Napoleon and Brian, some of the other ones from our area up here. The group also met with Senator Brown and Senator Portman and relayed, again, those same, those same kind of messages to those two individuals as well, and his staff. So that's all I have for that. Does that you have questions for that issue?
Questions for Brian. Thanks, appreciate the update on that, and if you could continue to keep us updated on any change in status and any of those things, appreciate knowing.
Sure, happy to do so. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Public Works Director, Mr. Kraft. Other questions for Mr. Kraft?
Brian, I had read recently there's kind of an uptick in materials for road construction. Are you seeing that in any of the bids coming in?
Well, I'm going to plead, I can't say that, no for sure. Most recent thing we bid was the Waterline and Tourline Project. Next week, we'll have our downtown bid opening for the paving, so we probably can do a comparison of that with other projects, and even the state has the ability where they can show some of their statewide bid openings, and you can start to compare unit prices, we could do that.
You haven't seen anything out of the ordinary, though, over the last five years or so?
Asphalt's gone up quite a bit due to the base cost with petroleum, but I would say the concrete work, I just think it's mostly, our problem is, we don't bid a large volume, so when they do come in, you're going to see the unit price go up, just because if they're going to do it, they're going to make some money on the smaller quantity where the, like the roundabout project, anything we're going to do downtown, we have bigger projects, I think you're going to start to see the economies of scale where you can, they'll spread that cost out over other items a little bit, so. But we can, we can take a look at the next bid opening and start doing some comparing. But yeah, I think everything certainly is trending up, just like in any construction. I think they usually average anywhere from 3% to 4% a year, is what you can expect.
Thanks.
Unfortunately.
Thanks.
Thanks, Brian, appreciate it. That concludes our official reports. Do we have any council committee reports this evening?
Mr. President, prior to this meeting, there was a meeting of the Community Improvement Committee to continue to discuss single-use plastic bags. It was primarily a time for public comment. I'll spare you too many details as all of us were there, though. There's another meeting that's been scheduled for April 1st at 6 o'clock in Council Chamber.
Thank you, Mark. Additional committee reports.
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
As the Chair of the Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee, I've assumed the role of maintaining an update of our cap priorities that we established last April. I passed out to everyone prior to the meeting, an updated list of those same 10 priorities. The last update, you might recall, we discussed in October, so it's been about five months. And I'll just go through and highlight some of the changes to the status of some of these priorities. The top three haven't changed because we recognize those as actions completed. I moved the item number seven to a category I've entitled implementation started but not complete, because this, this involves the recommendations from the Bicycle Safety Commission that Phil's expecting to receive here in the near future. And I think once we see their priorities, we're going to be able to take some action one way or the other on it. So that's, that's a partially completed implementation priority. The next, we have a number nine on our list, and you can see it here, and I, but I split it for this new update into two parts, 9A and 9B. This is 9B. It originally had grouped together two priorities, 2J and 4G from the CAP Plan, and it, and as talked here, it's clear now that those two really aren't as related, they appeared to be back in April, so I've just split them apart and tracking them separate. That's the only reason I created two. But with 2J, what 2J is from the CAP Plan, it's at the bottom there, where it's to develop vacant university-owned property west of the CSX tracks between Evers Avenue and Ridge Street, as well as existing parking lots between Ridge Street and Court Street. And just for you, just so everyone can visualize that, the two screenshots of the map that I gave you, just shows you where that is. So you see the big lot there, just west of the railroad tracks. That's, that's the lot they're talking about. But at this point, BG SU has told the city that they have no immediate plans for that property, and certainly we, as a city, don't have any recommendations for immediate, not that they would, anyway. So at this point, I think it's just fair to table that implementation priority as something that's not, not of immediate concern, but we do know that the university does not have any immediate plans for that. Moving on to the next page, this is where we start to see some movement, I think, in the very near future. Take a step back, in our 2019 budget, there was $25,000 earmarked in light item 1010.522.73150 for the purpose of a contractor to come in and help revise and relook code in a lot of, in the zoning code. These priorities that are identified here by numbers 1, 2, 4, and 9A all, I think, fall into that category where they will necessarily be addressed by that project, which will soon go out with an RFP, and we'll get some, we'll get a contractor in to do that work. So those are all pending, but you may recall, too, that part of that, one of those projects, we had attempted to put together a committee to address just the off-street parking portion of that. I was on that committee, as was the City Administrator, Tretter, and Heather Saylor, and Judy Ennis, and we met a number of times, but we came to the conclusion that scope, the expertise needed, were outside what we could provide, any member of that committee. And we really needed some professional input to even, even to move forward there. So that, that's rolled in there as well. So those, those four will be addressed when that RFP goes out and the contractor's hired and, and the analysis of the, of the zoning code happens. And this is where you see the other half of what was priority number nine, this is now 9A. This deals with the 4G piece. 4G, if, I put the definition of 4G at the bottom, but that's the possible mixed-use development, including townhomes between Williams Street and Baldwin Avenue, at the corner of East Worcester and State Streets, and East Worcester Street and University Lane. What that means is those, that location really falls in also to overlaps with what we're likely to hear about recommendations from the project. So you've got an overlap of geography there, but it also involves zoning, so we'll see what happens. The other part of that is that I've asked the City Administrator to consider, you know, not moving forward with the RFP until we've had a chance to see the street implementation recommendation, because there may be zoning issues in there that, that will fit into the study that we're going to contract. So all of these things are sort of happening simultaneously and should resolve within a short period of time after we, as a council, get a chance to, the street implementation recommendations and choose direction that we want to go based on. So I think it's all coming together nicely there, but no immediate action. And again, that's what the second picture is, just in case you needed a memory jogger of where those, those properties are, I gave you a photograph of that as well. And then implementation pending, that one category, priority number five, Lori Tretter and I talked about that, this was, you may recall, we established these priorities back last year, issue came up about using tax increment to financing. I think all of us collectively realized we didn't know enough about what that really meant, and that it would be worthwhile to find someone who could educate us on that, and she's still looking. It's a very niche area of law and development. At some point, perhaps this year, I would hope, maybe we can get an update from somebody who's willing to give us a little primer on, on how the tip works, just so if it comes up, we'll at least have a base understanding of what's involved. So that's still on there. And then item 10, that, there's been no change in status there, that implementation priority 10 is still, still in committee, so. That is the update from, updates everything from the October 2018 update. It's only my goal to compile all the status and present it so that we all know where we stand on those original 10 priorities.
Greg, thanks for that update. I do think it's beneficial for us to review that periodically, we appreciate you doing that. One thing that's become clear, a large portion of what have been identified as goals or, you know, initial goals or action items, as you mentioned, do seem to be coming together with some of the things that we're hearing from the most recent cooperative effort with BG SU and their consultants as it relates to East Worcester Street. So, like you, and Lori, thanks for your update on that as well. Like you and everybody else on council, I look forward to that final report, because I do think that that can have an impact on some next steps type thing that we can do to address some things that we're anxious to get, get going on. So thank you.
Greg, I appreciate your digging into these things and providing some nice leadership for the Planning Committee, very helpful. The last item, number 10, it's a difficult issue. The Finance Committee is, has some involvement with this, dealing with property registration and self-certification, and a number of us have looked into that for actually a number of years, and, and we thought we were moving forward with the CAP program and just ran into some difficulties. Ohio law may not be conducive to some of the things we've discussed in terms of rental registration and so forth. And I'm hoping that, well, I guess I'll just speak for myself, I probably let that issue fall to the back burner as we started looking at some of the other things you mentioned. And I don't know exactly what the process is for bringing that forward. It's sort of part of just a broader program, Lori, that we talked about in our annual priorities that we want you to keep in mind. I guess at some point I would like to get a little more clarification on some of the legalities involved, so we know what, if anything, is possible to do going forward in terms of helping the good landlords continue to be good and helping the bad landlords to figure out how to be better landlords. And so there's a number of things to consider there, and so just think about how we can move forward with that.
Thank you. Additional council committee reports. Very good. Seeing none, I would ask Kay if you would lead us through the reading of legislation, please.
Legislation for first reading, Resolution Number 3727 for first reading. Resolution authorizing the Mayor of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio to file a capital and operating plan for the years 2019 through 2022 with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the U.S. Department of Transportation, as authorized under federal transit laws as codified, 49 U.S.C., Section 5311, financial assistance for other than urbanized areas. Ordinance number 8754 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing Municipal Administrator and Utilities Director to seek qualifications and/or advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for design, engineering, right-of-way acquisition, construction, and other services relating to the East Worcester Street-Campbell Hill Road Roundabout Project. Ordinance number 8755 for first reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 113.04. Ordinance number 8755 for first reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 35.70 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding city fees and fees charged for services. Ordinance number 8756 for first reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 113.04B, D, and E of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding mobile food vendors. Legislation for second reading. Ordinance number 8750 for second reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.01N of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding salary schedule established. Ordinance number 8751 for second reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.03A of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio relating to pay for school police, interns, and civil infractions hearing officer. Ordinance number 8752 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the exchange of real estate with the Wood County Board of Developmental Disabilities. Ordinance number 8753 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to accept an easement for utility purposes from Howard M. Gray Jr. and Linda S. Gray. And there is no legislation for third reading.
Thank you, Kay. That completes the items on our agenda this evening. Is there any other business to come before council? Seeing none, at the request of Ms. Tretter, I would accept or ask for a motion for an executive session to discuss property acquisition.
So moved. Thank you.
Been moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Harold?
Yes.
Allenbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinett?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zampardino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes. The motion passes. We will now adjourn, or adjourn to executive session. We will not be taking any, um, action as a result of this executive session this evening. Thank you all very much. We appreciate you coming.